Buck, are we ready? Okay. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. We have two meetings tonight. We have the WPCA meeting, which starts in a minute here. We'll get going. And then separately, we have our regularly scheduled Board of Finance meeting that will follow the this WPCA meeting. So I'd like to call the WPCA meeting to order and Judy, if you could do the roll call, please.
Neil Button.
Here.
Judy Neville. Tom Schulte.
Here.
Amy Carroll is absent. Todd Lavieri.
Yep.
Michael Chen is coming.
He's coming.
Chris Labrie.
Yeah.
Victor Alvarez. Is he online?
Nope, he had to recuse himself.
From the whole meeting or just?
For the WPCA.
I know, okay. And Marie Winegarden has recused herself. All right. Bob Hamel.
Here.
And Colm Dobb.
Here.
All right, so we need to see both Robert Hamel and Colm Dobb.
Yep, so moved.
Motion. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, second. Second, Neil, all in favor? I? Opposed? None? All right, so move, Judy.
All right.
And I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting that we had on May 10th.
Remarkably enough, so moved. One second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. Okay, so for tonight, for the WPCA meeting, I would thank everybody for joining this meeting. This is the meeting of the Water and Pollution Control Authority for the town of New Canaan, also known as the WPCA. So I'd like to make a few opening comments and make sure we're all clear on our our purpose for tonight. The purpose for tonight's meeting is for this body, the WPCA, to decide with our best ability whether or not the proposed development at 751 Weed Street requires an extension to the existing sewer system. We'll ask for input tonight first from the applicant's lawyer, Tim Hollister, then from the town engineer, Maria Coplet, and then from attorney enough, a Connecticut-based attorney with some knowledge and experience on this matter. This board's received and hopefully read the reports and all the materials in advance. But before we begin, let me brief this board as well as the people of New Canaan on the process. So in late January, an application was filed with the WPCA that sought approvals to permit a large multifamily development at 751 Weed Street to be serviced by the town's sewer system. Shortly thereafter, Planning and Zoning Commission received an application to allow the development of a 102-unit affordable housing development filed under Connecticut General Statute Section 8-30G. This board, the WPCA, has two questions to answer. As I outlined in my memo to the town into the into this WPCA on March 5th, it was also posted on the town website a few days later. The two WPCA questions are: one, does the development require an extension of the existing public sewer system? And two, can the existing water treatment facility and all the related town sewer infrastructure handle the projected increase in volume and usage from 102-unit development located at 751 Weed? Both questions will ultimately be answered, but tonight we're only addressing the first item regarding whether or not this proposed development requires includes a request or requirement to extend the municipal sewer. If we determine that it does, then by law, we're required to refer this extension to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report that is either positive, supports the extension, or negative, does not support the extension. In the event we determine that the plan proposed by the applicant involves an extension, then this matter will be taken up by Planning and Zoning Commission at their next meeting, which I believe is June 16th. Either way, referral or no referral, the WPCA will continue to evaluate the second question regarding capacity and infrastructure integrity. I would hope that we'd be able to review data and information regarding the capacity questions this month in advance of our July meeting. It should be noted that all data and interdepartmental reports that are required to be submitted to us as part of the second question have not yet been reviewed. We will hold another meeting in July to discuss this second question, at which time public comment limited to the sewer issues will be allowed. Also, and this is directed to Mr. Hollister as the agent for the applicant, we would like to formally request tonight that the deadline to complete our work be extended until August 1st. The additional time will be needed to properly evaluate the application and to obtain whatever additional information may be needed to complete our due diligence. We'd like Mr. Hollister's consent when it's his turn to speak, and we'll ask that we confirm that consent writing. Lastly, a few comments. While Attorney Hollister will be permitted to present his complete application tonight, the purpose of this meeting is solely to hear the facts regarding a potential extension to the existing sewer system. The applicant has legal rights to have this application reviewed. This meeting is not about easements, sewer system capacity, system integrity, or the ability, infrastructure to handle increased volumes. Those items, as I said, will be discussed, and the public will be allowed to comment at a future meeting of this board. It's also not about local zoning, traffic, or other related aspects of this development. We have one matter that needs to be addressed tonight. We're here to listen to the reports, gather the facts, and make a decision as to whether or not this needs to be referred to planning and zoning. With that as background, again, let me just quickly review the agenda and invite our speakers. First, we will hear from Peter Gelderman, Town Attorney with Bircham Moses, then Mr. Hollister, Attorney for 751 Weed Street Development, then Maria Coplet, our Town Engineer, and Attorney Nuff. We will ask questions, if any, then vote on tonight's issues. The speakers will please speak from the podium, and with that, Peter, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is on. Mr. Chairman, members of the WPCA. I just had a few preliminary comments as Chairman Lavieri mentioned. The first issue has to do with whether or not this application involves an extension, actually a location or extension of the sewer. And specifically, that's that issue is relevant because Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statute says that no municipal agency, including the WPCA, shall locate or extend public utilities and terminals for water, sewage, light, power, transit, and other purpose until the proposal to take such action has been referred to the commission for a report, the commission being the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think, without putting words in anybody's mouth, I think tonight Mr. Hollister will argue to the to the WPCA that this is not an extension, rather merely a connection. I think the town engineer will probably argue that this is an extension. Attorney Nuff will argue that this is an extension requiring referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe it's an extension requiring referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but that's an opinion, and it's ultimately up to the WPCA to make that determination as to whether or not this particular application involves an extension of the public sewer. So with that, I'll I'll turn it over to Attorney Hollister.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, please. Am I allowed to move this?
Good evening, Chairman Lavieri, members of the Water Pollution Control Authority, Town Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I am Attorney Tim Hollister from Hartford. With me is Leonard DeAndrea, a professional engineer from the firm of RVDI in Greenwich. I want to thank Ms. Murphy for her assistance with logistics and getting us to tonight's meeting. The applicant's written materials that you should all have at this point are the application that bears a date on its cover of April 14th, 2022. The supplemental materials that we filed online on May 31st, a week ago today. Just to explain what that is, the first part is excerpts from a brief in a Westport sewer case, Mr. Geldman and I were involved in regarding the effect of a General Statute's 824 referral to the PCC on the decision that you ultimately make. The answer being, there is no impact. Second part is a from the town's own geographic information system, or GIS, diagram showing what of the existing neighboring properties to 751 Weed Street are connected to the already connected to the public sewer system. And basically, as we'll show you, it's all properties east, north, and south of the intersection of Weed and Elm. Those are all connected. Now, I'm going to request that all that we include in the record of this proceeding, all items, including emails that have been posted on the town website since January of 2022, when the original application was filed relating to the sewer application, as well as the May 12th, 2022 report of ACOM, which dealt with the treatment plant capacity. I will note for the record, and Mr. Chairman, I do have in mind your request for an extension to August 1st, and I'll come back to that. But I, there are some outstanding items. One is our Freedom of Information Act request sent about 10 days ago to members of this WPCA and town staff for all documents and electronic communications. We had asked for those by June 3rd. We did not have those responses yet. There is a an FOI request regarding ACOMs, the consulting firm's retention and work related to this application. I want to note for the record that part of your required process in your sewer rules is a comment from the New Canaan Health Department and the Sanitarium. I believe that's the one referral from a town staff that we have not seen an answer to. And then also, Mr. Mann has alerted us to the fact that there is a further report coming from the ACOM firm. Our understanding, although we haven't seen any documentation of this, is that it is a study of what's called inflow and infiltration. And just for the record, I've already expressed the applicant's concern to town staff, and we'll say now to this commission for the timing of that report. Because under the current deadline, we need to finish up the work here by July 15th. So we, at this point, we don't know when that report is coming, and I will say candidly, my concern is that it's going to be presented to us not very long before the July meeting, that's a continuation of this proceeding. That would be a concern. We need to, the study apparently has been going on since October of last year. You've had the application since January of this year. We're just hoping that we get that report in a timely manner that we can read it and respond to it. Now, I, as you know, I do have the task. I didn't go seeking this, but I'm obligated to inquire about predetermination, and I believe Attorney Geldman has consulted with you about this. I did pose, send a letter on May 23rd, and I just, I'll repeat, I didn't really have any choice based on the email exchanges that were sent between you back in February. So I, you have the questions, and I don't know, Attorney Geldman, do you have a suggested procedure as to how we get the, I can just ask each member to answer the questions, or is that the appropriate way to do it?
Everybody answered no. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm not sure what you're confused about.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, everyone answered the questions no, except one member and who recused themselves.
Okay, but I, the first question I laid out was for you, Mr. Chairman, is to explain why your February 26th email should not be regarded as stating a belief that a majority of the WPCA as of that date had determined its vote already.
Okay, you're here to discuss whether there's an extension or not. That's what we're going to talk about. Remember, you did pull your application, so when you go back to January, that's interesting, but not relevant. You reissued your application in March. As it relates to the specific question you have of these members, be very careful to impugn the integrity of this board, very careful. I'm telling you, they answered all the questions no. There were no issues, except for one member who has recused themselves.
Okay, no one has communicated that to me. So you're telling me now that the answer to every question on every, as to every member is no.
All of them. No, no. Everybody is here, answered no for every question.
Okay, and please understand, I'm not impugning anyone's integrity. I'm asking a very logical and necessary, legally necessary question that comes right out of the email exchanges. You yourself, Mr. Chairman, expressed concern that your inboxes were filling up with directions from citizens telling you how to vote. And you, and someone recused themselves on that basis. I think that's a pretty important thing.
Let me be clear about that.
Okay.
No one, to my knowledge, you can have all the emails, asked us how to vote, because no one knew what this was, that this was the topic that we were going to be voting on, the extension. So my specific email, as it relates to communicating the process, was in reference to the application that was filed in January, and I was getting everyone prepared as to what was coming our way. No one interpreted it as anything other than the stating of the process. So it wasn't, you're the only person who implied that there would be any kind of bias, and that was.
No, I didn't imply bias. I asked a question as to whether you, for your explanation. So let's, let's be apples to apples on that explanation. So will we be apprised as to who recused themselves and why and what the basis was?
I have a problem with that. Yeah, sure. Victor Alvarez recused himself for having a conversation with the newspaper on this topic. And Maria Winegarden, I asked to step down and for this meeting back in February, when she had made some comments. So.
Okay, all right.
So they both are recused, and they're not here tonight. Everyone else answered no to your questions.
All right, thank you. That's on the record, and that's, I can move on. The application facts, and I'll refer to the slide that's on the screen, which comes out of the revised report prepared by Mr. DeAndrea's firm. So the property, 751 Weed Street, at the corner of Weed and Elm, is 3.1 acres. Present use is a single-family home of approximately eight bedrooms, built in the 1920s, with a pool house added in approximately 1960 for a total square footage of about 10,000 square feet. Now, very important to this proceeding is the fact that there is a town record, which we reproduced in our application as Tab 2A, that shows that the town of New Canaan, the probably a predecessor to this WPCA, granted permission to the then-owner of 751 Weed Street in 1959 to extend the public sewer line to the subject property and to connect to it. So the way we look at it is that in 1959, the town had discretion to allow the sewer to be extended to a new property, a further geographic extension of the sewer system to 751 Weed Street, and it exercised that discretion, and the discretion was to grant the extension. Now, one sort of geophysical thing about sewer extensions is you only grant them once. Now, as Mr. DeAndrea will explain, the existing sewer connection is through a private easement to the east of 751 Weed Street, through two private property parcels, and then into Elm Street. So on the diagram, it's the blue line that runs roughly through the middle of the diagram. 751 on the left, the blue line is the easement, and I thank you for tracing that, and then down, then south to Elm Street, connecting to the manhole that is shown in a very small red circle. The, also on the illustrations that I provided to each of the members just before we began, the, so you have the solid red line that goes from, you, we could trace that from east to west. There are three, the existing sewer system, three manholes. And then you have what I highlighted in yellow, which is the new pipe and lateral within Elm Street, and that is the red dash line. So basically, what you, what we're doing is, the only thing we're proposing here is to move the connection point from the intersection of the blue and red line in the lower right corner, three manholes to the left. Move, that's the sum total of what we're proposing to do here. Now, there's a copy of the private sewer easement on the town's website. I didn't think I needed to include it again in our materials. I'm sure everyone's read it, but the important points are that that easement of 751 Weed Streets owner has a right to inspect, maintain, and replace the line as needed. There is no limit on volume or purpose of the discharge, and the applicant can continue to discharge from the redevelopment if it's approved and built through the private easement. So that's why we explained in our application materials, this is really a preference. It's not a necessity, and denial of this application will not prevent the zoning application or the sewer utility part of the redevelopment from going forward. Now, the, this is a two-part application to move the discharge and into, from the private easement into Elm Street, and that the sort of the rationale for that is really quite simple. It will eliminate the need to go on to the private property if and when maintenance is needed, and it also shortens the distance from 751 Weed Street to the public sewer system connection by about 40 or 50%. So again, that's a preference, but one backed by convenience and engineering. Now, another important fact, and this also, as I'll get to, this also is relevant to the extension issue, is that all properties east of Weed Street, north and south of Elm, are already connected to the public sewer system. And the supplemental materials from last week, Tab 2, we've given you the town's GIS system. And most of those properties, especially the ones right along Weed Street, are connected through private easements, just the way 751 is. So this application does not open up any new properties in the town of New Canaan to a sewer system connection. And as an aside, the town engineer Coplet, in her May 31 memo to you, agreed with that analysis. And we've been through the properties one by one to document that fact. The second part of the application, which we will cover, at least in the applicant's presentation tonight, is to increase the capacity in the public system to accommodate 102 proposed apartment homes. And as we, as you'll hear, we can, as a physical engineering matter, we can run the increased discharge through the existing easement. There's ample capacity, and we have the legal right. And I would just, before I move on to Mr. DeAndrea, I just note that you will need to address each of the two parts of the application, the moving the connection point and the increased discharge in a, in a separate vote, or at least I think that would be the proper way to do it. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeAndrea.
Good evening. As stated, my name is Leonard DeAndrea, Connecticut professional engineer, principal with the firm of DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering PC. It was noted, the firm is Rocco B. DeAndrea, Inc. This is a PC formed underneath that umbrella. It's the same staff, it's the same principles. I think it's very clearly stated that, and I think it's important for me to state again, we are in no way looking to extend the sewer district. We are simply looking to relocate the sewer lateral serving 751 Weed. And that's because we certainly recognize that with a project of this nature, we are increasing the gallons per day that would be generated from this project. And instead of continuing to go down through a shared sewer collector, we thought it would be better engineered, more appropriate, if we just took it right out to Elm Street and then had our lateral go out there and take it away from that shared line. So as Attorney Hollister said, we wouldn't have to worry about late-night issues. Maybe someone else has an issue on the line that could affect our project as well. So we're looking to just separate that. Again, not extending the sewer anyway, but just relocating that. And again, it's because right now there's a single-family home there, and this project is looking to add 55 two-bedroom units, 47 one-bedroom units. And those using the standard design requirements, we're looking at 75 gallons per day per person, and we multiply it by the bedroom. So when you're looking at 55 two-bedroom units, we could be generating 16,500 gallons per day. When you look at the 47 one-bedrooms, it would be about 7,050 gallons per day. Very conservative numbers, because in talking about another project in a different town recently, these numbers have never been, these, these, the way we calculate that has never been adjusted. And I think we all know in some of these newer homes, we have a lot of low-flow losses and things like that. So these, again, are very conservative numbers, also because of the, of how these units are actually utilized. If not, everybody has the maximum amount of people in each of these units. So it's a conservative number. But in addition to that, you take that gallons per day, and then they have peaks, morning, afternoon, sometimes, middle of the day in the commercial areas, and that's a factor of four. So when we look at pipe capacities, we're not just taking that average throughout the day, but we're going to take that average and then create a peak flow factor. And we did that, and that's how we made sure that, one, there was, there was pipe conveyance capacity in the existing shared collector through the easement. And then through the requirement of the DPW, we also then hired an outside consultant to do flow monitoring in the existing line down Elm Street to also then record that data, so we could then add our contribution to it, and again, demonstrate and prove that there's sufficient capacity in that Elm Street line as well. So now, in our sewer, sewage, let's see the title here, sanitary sewer connection summary report that we originally prepared in January of 2022, and we revised again in April 2022 after we got this additional information. We demonstrated that that, that there is sufficient capacity in the Elm Street line, and also, we did our own calculations and proved that there was capacity in the existing shared collector. The other thing we have to look at, of course, and this is not the first project we've done that with, what about the sewage treatment plant itself? So from previous projects, we know that it had a certain design capacity, and we also know from previous studies, and then refreshing that, that there is about 450,000 gallons per day of additional capacity. That's what we knew from our studies. Then, as timing would work out for us, the town of New Canaan, as you all may know, had hired ACOM to do a far more in-depth study, because most towns, a lot of towns, are dealing with not so much the contribution of new homes and new developments, but this infiltration of groundwater. And that's because when these old sewer lines were put in, they weren't put in with nice, tight plastic pipe with O-ring seals, but they were short sections of clay pipe, and they're very leaky. Greenwich has a program, Stanford has a program, and I see New Canaan's heading that way too, and that's great. So what we are always working with, but you say, okay, you have treatment capacity, you have line capacity, but we, your project adversely impacted when we have a heavy rainstorm. We, we can't, we can't control that. But what the ACOM study came up and said, your treatment plan is working well. It does have excess capacity. You do have an infiltration problem. And as a town of New Canaan, you should look to ways to lessen that. So every time you take a leaky line and you remove that groundwater, that's a big improvement. Our project in itself will not contribute to that problem. It's going to operate on a normal, normal basis, and there is plant capacity for that. We, of course, when we look at this new lateral, if we're able to install it in the street, it will be an eight-inch pipe, not a six-inch pipe. It'll be plastic, it'll have the proper O-ring seals, and it'll be installed to the design requirements of the town of New Canaan. So as far as an engineering proposal goes, as far as we look at this, this is the best way to go for a project like this. Should it be approved, we think it would be best to allow us to relocate that lateral and get it into Elm Street sooner, as soon as we can, in a shorter distance, so we can avoid having to go down the shared six-inch lateral. We also have memos from Maria, who will be speaking tonight, too. We've addressed another of her concerns and responses, and as we move forward, we'll continue to work with the GPW and the Engineering Department to be sure that our design meets all of their criteria. Other than that, there's any specific questions?
What I'd like to do now is just give the, give the members a brief primer on Water Pollution Control Authorities and sewers and land use. And I somewhat recognize you are the Board of Finance, and my understanding is sewers are not a regular part of your agenda, so let me just. a regular part of your agenda. So let me just make two points of explanation. Um, the first is that water pollution control authorities do not control land use and zoning. And it is not legal in the state of Connecticut to use sewers to allow or deny any particular land use or zoning category. That's up to the planning and zoning commission. They're exclusive purview by state law. So it would be illegal, for example, to grant only enough sewer capacity uh, to a particular parcel to build a single-family home or, or for the purpose of preventing some other type of development. Uh, as Attorney Geldman advised you back in February, a copy of his memo is at tab two D of our application package. You should make the assumption in dealing with the application before you that multifamily development is allowed on the subject property. And conversely, you cannot deny based on opposition to multifamily development. You uh, to use the phrase, uh, stay, please stay in your lane and focus on the management of the sewer system. Another way that is expressed in court cases and law is that sewers are public utilities like streets. Any property owner adjacent to or connected to an existing system has access rights and a denial of those rights or that access without a valid technical reason would violate the property owner's uh, property rights. And in the context of this application could actually end up violating the state and federal fair housing acts. Okay, now let me move on to the topic that uh, the chair introduced at the uh, beginning, which is why this is not an extension or a relocation that requires general statutes, uh, section eight twenty-four referral to the planning and zoning commission. There has been uh, uh, over the last couple of months, some back and forth among the staff and opponents of this application. And we have seen uh, two assertions. The first is that if the town as a whole can characterize this proposal as an extension, then the application will have to go to the planning and zoning commission for an eight-dish twenty-four report. The planning and zoning commission will issue a negative report and that will be the end of this sewer application and the end of the zoning application. We've also seen it asserted that if the town can call this an extension, then this WPCA has discretion to deny for whatever reason, for any reason whatsoever. Both of those assertions are not correct. Um, so I'm going to suggest that we not quibble over words and labels, but deal with the facts and what the state law actually says. As Attorney Geldman pointed out, the exact wording of eight dash twenty-four is no municipal agency shall relocate or extend utilities for sewage until the proposal has been referred to the planning and zoning commission acting, which would be acting in its planning capacity, which is different from its zoning capacity. And I can explain that further if you, if you want. But it's acts in its planning capacity and it issues a report. And the word report is also very important. It's important to read these words in their context. If a property owner wants to extend a sewer main or lateral simply to create a more convenient manhole or discharge in the existing system, that is not a planning issue. It is not something that requires uh, or in my, my understanding is ever referred uh, within this town to the planning and zoning commission. If someone wants to relocate, that's the second option in the statute. Someone wants to relocate an existing sewer line several feet or a long distance as part of a street repaving, for example. The proposal does not need to go to planning. These are sewer engineering and maintenance issues. And as examples, we have done some research and our understanding is that the Waveney Life Care Facility uh, illustration at tab two G of our application materials, Canaan Parish, Millport and The View, all involved relocations, physical relocations of an existing sewer connection to a new point, and none of those were referred to the planning and zoning commission. So if we're going to take the words literally, then you have not, not been following that uh, uh, protocol in your uh, previous, and the town has not been following it in its previous actions. But the point is those types of relocations uh, or extensions simply do not get referred to the planning and zoning commission uh, because they're not planning issues. The point being that an extension or a relocation, those two words within general statutes eight dash twenty-four refers logically, necessarily and exclusively to altering the boundary of the town's sewer service system. They refer to adding a new property to the system. If there is a referral, what the planning and zoning commission does, it reviews whether sewer-ing a new property or a new set of properties is consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development. That would be a planning review. So in other words, extending or relocating a sewer main or lateral that serves an already connected property does not warrant a, a rever- referral to the planning and zoning commission. Extending or relocating to add a new property to the sewer district, that is what warrants a referral to the planning and zoning commission. You do not have that situation here. Another way to say that is planning, the PCC will act in its planning capacity. Planning is the orderly, defined as the orderly sequential process of land development. For sewers, the PCC input is needed when sewers are extended to facilitate new service to land that is not presently served by the sewer. Now, uh, additional evidence that the town itself buys into this definition is found in section three twenty-seven of your uh, sewer rules and regulations, which say that modifying or replacing an existing connection to the public sanitary sewer system only needs a quote, "new sanitary connection permit" unquote, and not a PCC referral. So don't take my word for it. It's in your regulations. Um, I would also note as an aside that the sewer capacity issue, uh, part of this application clearly is not covered by eight twenty-four, so that part stays here and does not get referred uh, to the planning and zoning commission. In any event, if this application is over the applicant's disagreement or referred to the PCC, the commission will issue an advisory report, which is not binding on this WPCA. That's covered in, among other places in the supplemental materials from West, the Westport case that I provided to you last week. A net, so-called negative planning and zoning ref- a report on an eight twenty-four referral does not suspend or stop this process. Another way to say that is the planning and zoning commission does not have a veto over what this water pollution control authority does. You must still proceed to vote on the two parts of the April fourteenth application, regardless of any referral and regardless of whether planning and zoning issues a positive or negative report. Um, I would also note as an aside that I told you that the planning and zoning commission, if it does get a referral, will look at consistency of the sewer proposal with its plan of conservation and development. Interestingly, it is noted in the town's plan of conservation and development that New Canaan has not even to this point adopted a sewer map. The, most towns have one. The New Canaan does not have a sewer map showing where the public sewer system is supposed to end or, or what is referred to as the uh, uh, sewer service district. Finally, uh, just trying to meet you somewhat halfway in the alternative, not conceding uh, or backing down from anything I've already said. Let's assume that this application is an extension or a relocation and the water pollution control authority has discretion. Even so, we would suggest that the following are the reasons it needs to be approved. Number one, property is already connected to the sewer system. The extension was granted in nineteen fifty-nine. Number two, as you heard from Mr. Deandrea, the minimal uh, flow that is being added uh, will not diminish the already ample capacity uh, in the transmission lines in Elm Street and the sewer plant. There's simply no technical uh, issue with regard to capacity or the ability of, of the system to discharge flow. Number three, this is really a minimal proposal. I mean, just look at, look at the screen. It's a hundred and thirty feet. This, your sewer system is, I'm sure, several miles. This is small potatoes. Uh, adding one manhole, one lateral and uh, uh, a couple of, a couple of feet of pipe. As, as we've said, no technical engi- or engineering issues. Giving up the private sewer easement in favor of the public street creates easier maintenance. The proposal does not allow any new properties to be soured. And by the way, uh, section fifty-one dash one of the town ordinances, separate and apart from your sewer rules, requires that any property which has a public sewer available to it, which this one clearly does, requires uh, a sewer connection. So it's our uh, view that a denial would either be based on some invalid reason, such as opposition to multifamily or some pretextual reason, which will be based on some stated uh, and not proper reason. So again, you, you ultimately need to vote on the two parts separately, moving the connection and increasing the flow. So Mr. Chair and members, I will stop there and yield the floor to uh, your town staff, unless you're there, any questions?
I think we'll do questions at the end. Is that okay? Well, sure. Yeah, let's, we'll just, we'll, we'll play it that way. Okay. That's it then, for now? Okay, thank you. All right, um, let me invite Maria up, please. Tucker, can we do questions instead of jumping back and forth? Can they do them from the table or do they have to jump up to the podium to answer? Okay, that makes it easier.
Good evening, Chairman LaVere, members of the board. On behalf of the WPCA and the Department of Public Works, the engineering department reviewed the revision of the application for seven fifty-one Weed Street, originally submitted on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Quote, requesting a sewer capacity allocation and approval to connect to the sewer system, a proposed multifamily residential development consisting of a hundred and two units, end quote. The original application was withdrawn March twenty-fifth and subsequently revised, resubmitted and distributed to our department on April twentieth. The proposed project generally remains the same, with the current application making, quote, "two independent requests" to move the sewer connection and to increase the discharge capacity. Our department has prepared three memos pertaining to the applications to the WPCA for seven fifty-one Weed Street. Engineering DPW memos dated February fourth, March eighteenth, and most recently, May thirty-first summarized or reviews of the proposed project presented to the WPCA in regards to the public sewer. The seven fifty-one Weed Street parcel is located within the town of New Canaan Sewer Taxing District and is currently served by public sewer via a private lateral located within an onsite and offsite private easement. In order to evaluate the application before the WPCA, the engineering department identified additional due diligence measures required to be performed by the applicant. These tasks included sewer main cleaning, televising the existing main to evaluate condition, sanitary sewer flow depth, monitoring to determine available capacity within the section of public sewer main from the existing sanitary sewer manhole in Elm Street east toward the intersection of Elm and Park Streets. The recent April resubmission presented by the applicant included the flow test results over a course of approximately two weeks from Flow Assessment Services, which recorded the requested existing sewer flows and depth within the existing sewer main in Elm Street, upgrading of its intersection with Park. The report presents that the flow volume conditions of the existing sewer main in Elm Street has sufficient capacity for the proposed increase in flows associated with the current project while maintaining additional available capacity in the pipe. At this time, we are still awaiting results of the required televising or the CCTV work. But to the best of our knowledge, the applicant is arranging for the main to be cleaned and televised up to the existing sanitary sewer manhole upgrading of the intersection of Elm and Park Streets. And they are to coordinate this work with a sewer department and police department. The applicant submission states, the application includes, quote, "information requested by section two-two-nine of the New Canaan Sewer Rules and Regulations, including this later, letter explaining why the reconnection is being requested," end quote. Now, under section two-two-nine point four of the Sewer Rules and Regulations, the Health Department, Engineering Department, Department of Public Works, Inland Wetlands and Water Forces Agency, Planning and Zoning Commission, Assessor, Fire Marshal and Building Official are all to review the written request and provide recommendations to the WPCA. Per that directive, the engineering department reviewed the applicant's submission for WPCA consideration for a revised sewer connection requiring a sanitary sewer main extension of our public sewer main and an increase in sewer discharge to the sewer conveyance system and the wastewater treatment facility. In regards to the request for a revised sewer connection, due to the fact that the proposed work requires new sanitary sewer main piping in Elm Street in an area where there currently is no sewer main located, a sanitary sewer main extension would be required of our public sewer main. The applicant has requested to extend the exte- the existing sanitary sewer conveyance system and fresh, infrastructure of the public sewer within Elm to allow for the requested new proposed connection from their subject parcel. To be a little bit clearer, currently, right now, there is no manhole to which the new connection is being sought. The public sewer line extension requested by the applicant does not appear to serve abutting properties, not currently in the sewer taxing district. The application illustrates the proposed location of approximately a hundred and thirty-five linear feet of new eight-inch PVC sewer mains to extend from an existing sanitary sewer manhole in Elm Street east of its intersection with Weed. They requested new public sewer main extension to be located within the public right-of-way of Elm Street terminates at a proposed new sanitary sewer manhole in Elm, which to which approximately eighty linear feet of proposed six-inch PVC sewer lateral is requested to be connected from the project site to serve the planned development. It is important to note that the current application before the WPCA states that the project does not require the sanitary sewer main extension work within the public right-of-way of Elm Street, that the existing sewer lateral contained within a private easement and private property, quote, "has ample capacity to handle the proposed additional discharge." Given this declaration, the engineering department would recommend that the requested sewer extension in Elm Street not be granted. The additional estimated a hundred and thirty-five linear feet of sewer main would disrupt our existing right-of-way in Elm Street and infrastructure therein and would increase the length of public main that the town would be responsible for in perpetuity. The town has no current nor future plans to extend the public sewer in this location. While still awaiting the results of sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV work, there are no known issues within the existing private sewer lateral nor the public sewer main. To verify its viability for continued use under the proposed project, it is recommended that the existing private sanitary sewer lateral also be cleaned and televised. Our May thirty-first memo also addresses the request to increase discharge capacity to our sewer, sewer conveyance system. And we understand that this second request in the application before the WPCA will be discussed at its next public hearing. I am available for any questions, anything that I can address tonight, I will. And anything that requires a little bit more investigation, I'll be able to follow up with everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Maria. So do you mind if you stay here? But if we have questions, we can, we can uh, easily get, get them from you for there. Thanks, Maria. Okay, and attorney Nuff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office at one forty-seven Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut. I'm here this evening on behalf of Elizabeth and Gregory Moore, who are the owners of three fifteen Elm Street, uh, which property busts the subject parcel. Uh, as you know, I submitted a memo dated May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. I would be happy to provide copies if, if any members of, of the authority uh, require that. Um, I'm not going to read my memo, but I'm going to summarize it uh, for brevity's sake. Um, and I'm going to limit my comments to the issue of extension versus connection as, as you had indicated, Mr. Chairman. In the memo, I indicate that the current application is substantively identical to the application filed on January twenty-fifth, which provided, and I'm quoting, "this application is filed pursuant to section two-twenty-nine of the New Canaan Sewer Rules and Regulations," end quote. Section two-twenty-nine, of course, pertains to request to, quote, "extend the sewer line." In the more recent application, the exact same proposed work is now portrayed as, quote, "moving the existing connection" or is a, quote, "reconnection." These terms are not defined, they're not recognized in the statutes, they're not recognized by your regulations, they're not recognized in case law. There have been other similar attempts uh, to use those sorts of terms, uh, in terms of, on the issue of connection or versus extension, but really these are just stylistic reformulations of what was substantively the exact of what was substantially the exact same application that was submitted in January. The current application also provides that there was, quote, "a rush to judgment" that the initial application proposed an extension, presumably blaming the WPCA and the town for simply reading the plain language of that of that application and the the language that the authority that the applicant provided to the authority. The simple fact is that the applicant proposes an extension of the public sewer for some very simple reasons, and no amount of wordsmithing can change that. As a preliminary matter, you're correct, Mr. Chairman, that easements are not a relevant matter for you to consider. Nonetheless, it's been it's been referenced by Attorney Hollister. And so I think it's important to note that the issue whether the use of the existing sewer lines for the proposed multifamily building is an overburdening of that easement, and that will be contested in the appropriate form. If not before this this authority, the proper body for that is the Connecticut Superior Court. But you should not simply accept the applicant's word that it has the right to discharge the quantity of sewage that will be generated by this by this development under the terms of that easement. Now, as to whether or not this is an extension or connection, as noted in my memo and in Maria's memo and her testimony just now, any construction of a sewer main in Elm Street, a public right-of-way, is necessarily an extension of, quote, "the public sewer," which is a defined term in your regulations. Simply, if the work is located in a public right-of-way, it is a construction and an extension of the public sewer. Common sense and Connecticut case law both support that conclusion. Any reformulation of that simple premise as a reconnection or as the moving of an existing connection is illogical and not recognized by any authority because that reconnection is taking place as part of work within the town's right-of-way. Second, the plain language of your regulations provides that the parcel seven fifty-one is not located within the public sewer system. Public sewer is defined as, quote, "a sewer in which all owners of a budding properties have equal rights as controlled by the WPCA and the town of New Canaan," end quote. It is undisputed, as you saw in the diagram here this evening, that seven fifty-one does not about the public sewer because seven fifty-one does not about the sewer main in Elm Street. I mean, that should conclude it. Nevertheless, I understand that in nineteen fifty-nine, this body approved a pri- a pri- private connection to the property to the sewer system. But under the applicant's theory, it could keep acquiring properties north along Weed Street and keep connecting to the public sewer through a series of easements and would never qualify as an extension. The authority not ought not to sanction that end route for potentially hundreds of units on this fragile premise of an easement and a sixty-three-year-old approval, both granted for a single-family home. So because the applicant had it right the first time, that it proposes an extension of referral to the PNC Commission under eight dash twenty-four is mandatory. Now, they also claim that with zero support, that an eight twenty-four is only required where the sewer sewer service is provided, quote, "for the first time." That's not what the statute says. It says locate or extend, and that's clearly what the applicant is proposing, to extend the sewer system in the street, the public right-of-way. And I think it's ironic for the applicant to entone that planning is defined as a coordination of public infrastructure to support new developments, while simultaneously claiming that the PNC Commission, acting in its planning capacity, has no role whatsoever in whether the public sewer system should be extended to enable one hundred and two units on a single-family parcel or to extend the the sewer line, the sewer main in Elm Street, whether it's a hundred or two units, three units, or ten units. No matter what linguistic gymnastics the applicant wants to employ, they had it right the first time. This is an application to extend the public sewer system. As to whether or not you ultimately approve the application, we're happy to come back and and address those matters separately. But I think on the on the question that's before you this evening of extension versus connection, I think it's very, very clear, as the applicant was very clear in his first application. This is unquestionably an extension of the sewer system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, questions from this board? You know what? Bob Hamble's online. I'm going to ask Bob's. We always forget the people that are online. Bob, did you have any questions? Now, or we can get started?
I really, I thought, you know, I understood all the presentations and I know I don't have questions.
Okay. Anybody?
Yeah, I just a couple of things. Could either the applicant or the town let this body know? Is there anything that it remains outstanding in terms of requested diligence or materials or responses to inquiries that remains outstanding that is relevant to this extension versus a mere connection issue? Is there anything outstanding, anything you are waiting on that would be relevant?
Waiting on more information, but not as it relates to the question regarding extension.
So what you're waiting on is solely capacity or other issues, but not?
Correct. It's it's more of infrastructure condition.
Got it.
Well, I
You you mentioned.
The advocate, yes. I I don't know, because I don't know what's been asked of ACOM or what ACOM is going to deliver. I I'm happy to accept Ms. Copeland's representation, but I haven't seen that yet. I haven't seen the report, so I I don't know.
Okay, so assuming that the outstanding report only relates to capacity, then there wouldn't be anything.
That's correct.
Okay. And ju- ju- just to try to boil this down, and Pete might have to make sure that I don't wander off the road here. So there's no question that this is both an extension and a relocation. It's just whether or not it's the type of extension or relocation that can be referred, right?
It it's a new pipe within the public street. Our point is, it's a reconnection of a property that's already connected to the sewer system, and that is not the type of proposal that goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I mean, yes, of course, it's a it's physically, are you going to put in a new pipe within Elm Street? There's no question about that, but it's not that is not a planning issue that gets referred to zoning. That's our that's our point. And I indeed, attorney enough, and Ms. Copeland, I didn't hear them address that in the eight twenty-four context. They just said it's an extension. Okay. It's a physical new pipe for a short distance, but it's but it would make no sense. And by the way, the the precedent here, Canyon Parish, Millport, The View, Waveney Life Care. Why would why would those not refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission? I think you need to think about precedent within the town. Could someone explain why those did not go to planning and zoning? Those are relocations.
Are any of those one hundred and thirty-five feet long, Mr. Hollister?
I'm sorry?
Were any of those extensions or relocations one hundred and thirty-five feet long?
I don't know the distance, Mr. Davenport, but I'm sorry.
You're you're making you're you're making a a supposition, or you ask you're asking us to say that this is the same as those, but we don't have the facts on this. So, you know, if you want to put something into evidence, you should.
I've given you the diagram, the actual plan of the Waveney Life Care, which is I'm going to just eyeballing it, is considerably longer than one hundred and thirty feet. Was considerably longer. That that's in your materials.
If I may, that was the lateral, not the public sewer main. So that, I think, is what the the issue is. If the relocation of your connection was made to an existing sanitary sewer manhole, then that would not be considered an extension of our sewer main. So that would be just a relocation of your lateral. But because of the fact that the request is to extend our public sewer main and install a new sanitary sewer manhole for which to make the new connection, that is what our position is, that this is a sewer main extension. It is not for the Engineering Department to make any recommendations, whether or not that should be recommended to planning and zoning. That is for the WPCA.
Any other questions?
When can we expect the camera of the inside of the pipe? Of the sewer?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear you.
When can we expect the camera video of the pipe? That is not part of this application yet.
Yeah.
What is that about?
The video, this is Leonard DeAndrea. The video inspections have been completed. They were done by Highland Sewer and Drain on two different occasions. And I'm not sure, Maria, if they've been given to you yet. Okay.
They have not.
So we have them. Our engineer, who was working on this, was away for two weeks. He was, I know, studying them today. I talked to the principal of Highland Sewer and Drain. They didn't find any issues. There is one last leg, not in Elm, but of the private sewer that we still have to get back and and video inspect, which requires a uniform traffic protection. But the all of Elm is clean. We would expect it to be clean, given the flows. The legs that we did, what they that they did video inspect on the offsite shared collector have been cleaned. They were PVC pipe. So other than one one last leg left, those have been done and will be submitting those to DPW probably in a day or so.
Speaking of swim lanes.
Excuse me?
Speaking of swim lanes, let's stay focused on extension.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll pick up capacity.
Sizing condition matters. I know it's.
All important, all needs to be, as Mr. Hollister's pointed out. It's got to all be looked at, and we will, but not for tonight. Okay, any other?
Yeah, just a procedural point. So I heard it said that so we decide whether this is an extension or not, and if it is an extension, then that would, by definition, mean we are referring it to PNC. So is that right? Is that how that goes, Pete? Well, right.
The literal the statute, I'm quoting from, well, I'm not quoting, it's over there, but the statute says that an extension, a location, by the way, not a relocation, a location of a sewer or an extension of a sewer, which, as Maria said, is the main in Elm Street, cannot go forward or has to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report. It the the statute doesn't give any discretion there, doesn't say unless there's really no planning impact or unless, you know, it's really not that big a deal. The statute doesn't say that. Statute says if it's a location of a sewer or an extension of a sewer, it gets referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight twenty-four report. That's what the statute says.
Okay, so again, I'm just trying to ground this decision-making in the context of the procedure, just to kind of make sure that we all understand what's to happen, were we to decide one way or another, and how that procedure would unfold. So were we to decide that, you know, again, I don't want to get caught up in the very semantics that seems to be right, what's at issue here, but if we were to decide that it's not an extension of the type that needs to be referred, that would be tantamount to approving that sole discreet issue. Is that correct? And then we'd still have capacity to deal with. But were we to decide that it is the type of location, relocation or extension that should be referred to PNC? Then the process is, that goes to PNC, they wrestle with it under their own rules. They come back to us with a recommendation, and we still make the final decision about that issue in light of the advice that we receive back from PNC.
Correct. I mean, that's essentially the process. If you decide it's not an extension and doesn't require a referral, then you're really done tonight. And but there still has to be a second hearing for the public to be able to comment and everything else. So but yes, if you make that determination, you're essentially finished. If you if you decide to refer it, then there'll be a letter written presumably from the chairman to the Planning and Zoning Commission asking them for a report under eight dash twenty-four for this extension.
Well, you say we're done, but not with the capacity.
No, no, just just.
Mr. Sholli, let me comment on your one thing you said. You implied that if the if this authority decides tonight to not refer to planning and zoning, that it's automatically approved as to the proposal to relocate into Elm Street. I I don't know that there's any automatic approval. You still have to consider the engineering and other aspects of it, but it's not. It's not an automatic approval if you don't refer it. I I would, I'm quibbling, but that's.
Right, but there's still some other issues. There's still some remaining.
There's still some other issues.
That part I get, but as to the discreet issue about, is this an extension for referral for PNC?
Yes.
That would essentially be decided.
Right, and and regarding you, what you have to do, I'm going to quote from the eminent legal authority, Attorney Gelderman, in the his memo of February fourteenth, and I'll quote, "In evaluating the application, the WPCA has limited discretion since the property is within the sewer district and is currently connected to the sewer, the applicant will argue that it has the right to the connection. That conclusion is supported by case law," unquote. So that's what he said in February.
And if I may explain that, rather than have Attorney Hollister explain it to you, if this is a connection, first of all, when that memo was written, I had never seen a map of the property. It had been described to me as a connection to the sewer and a relocation of the sewer line. By the way, it's important to note, and I think I said this, location and extension, not relocation extension. And but all I was saying in that memo was that if this is merely a connection and a capacity issue, the discretion of this body is limited. There is more discretion when the body is considering whether or not to extend the sewer. Independent of whatever the PNC does, you have discretion to determine whether or not it's appropriate. That discretion's not unlimited. You can't do it because, you you know, you don't like the color of somebody's hair, for example, but you have discretion reasonably exercised.
Okay, any other questions? Yep, go, Chris.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. So the first one is to Maria. We talked earlier about a number of examples were brought up of other projects in town, and you pointed out that these were laterals, that is, across the property and to an existing sewer connection.
Correct.
And so I'm trying to recall if any of those projects came, in fact, before this board, but I don't think they did. So they must have all been laterals.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a distinction. And the current connection with the the one that was in blue in the diagram is a lateral.
Correct. It's a lateral, excuse me, that's in an easement that covers both their onsite parcel and offsite parcel.
Okay. And so the applicant contended that that easement could be used to go forward with project and that they didn't need.
The lateral could be used.
Could be used to go for forward with the project and that you did not need the sewer to go down Elm Street. Does I get that correctly?
That's right.
I'm sorry.
Make sure my that's correct.
Okay.
And.
But now you're hesitating. Mr. Mr. DeAndrea had a comment on your earlier.
Right, I I'd like to make a distinction. Maria noted that this is a lateral that's shared by a number, I think it's five altogether, potentially. We don't look at this as a lateral. We look at this as a private sewer collector, which ties into the collector in Elm Street. The lateral is from the house, existing house in seven fifty-one that goes to a sanitary sewer manhole, the dead end, which is part of that private sewer collector. But that's not a single lateral. There are laterals from each house into that sewer collector.
Maybe I'm missing it. What's the significance of that distinction?
So now here's my sewer collector, and here's my house, and I have a lateral going into the collector. At the end of this line is a manhole, and here's the house in seven fifty-one, and it's a lateral comes from the house to that private collector. We look at this shared as a collector, not a single lateral, because to to us, a lateral is coming from that individual building into a collector and into a trunk, and then finally into the sewer treatment plant.
And how many other properties are hooked up to that?
Let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five presently at brief. I believe it's five presently.
Just a clarification, though, Chris. The easement isn't that really for us to think through tonight? It's not a and some that's not something we can really opine on?
Yeah, I know. I just said if.
It may or may or not be allowed. I don't know.
You know, what are they asking?
You don't know. We don't know that. No one knows whether they can or they can't. I think attorney enough said he's gone to the Supreme Court for it, so I don't. I wouldn't presume anything. But more importantly, not our swim lane. If I were to recap what I heard, Maria says this is an extension, attorney enough says this is an extension, and you said it was an extension of one hundred and thirty-five feet, although a de minimis one. So that's what that's what we heard.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, well, then I'm going to have a, unless there are any other questions, I'll try to craft a a motion, and we'll we'll have to see where people stand on this. But we did hear testimony and evidence from the applicant from our town engineer, Maria Copeland, and from attorney enough. So. So the motion would be this. It would have. Given the evidence that we've heard, that's in the record and supports the finding that the application involves an extension. Of the municipal sewer system, and I think it's worth repeating what. What Attorney Gelderman said on section eight twenty-four, the Connecticut statute requires that any extension or location. Of the municipal sewer system must be referred to planning and zoning. I would like a motion that the request for an extension of the sewer. As set forth in the subject application for seven fifty-one, we'd be referred to Planning and Zoning Commission for a report.
So moved.
I have a second, Judy. All in favor? Bob, you have to vote.
Aye.
Bob Hamel?
Yes, aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Okay, so moved. Just a few follow-ups. We do have a second topic. On capacity integrity, I think. It was, comment was made that we're not sure about rainstorms, infiltration issues, and so forth. We need to look at everything, not just a few things. So those would be things that we'll be looking at. Attorney Hollister, you asked for some things upfront. Around FOI, I think I answered your FOI question as it relates to this board. We can. Peter, we can send that to him in writing. I don't have a problem with that. We, we did our job. We. We were asked if anyone had any conflicts, and we answered those questions, and we had one recused, so. Yeah, we can.
I'm happy to confirm that in writing.
Yeah, absolutely confirm in writing.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the, the question about the predetermination was answered on the record. I have asked under the Freedom of Information Act for any communications, electronic, or paper. That you have sent or received, as explained, I have not gotten that response yet.
Yeah, the only thing I've sent, I guess, well, we could certainly, Tucker can take care of that. I, I put one memo out there just for the town to know. To explain what we needed to do, specifically telling the members of this board. To not engage in discussion, writing, online, internet, Facebook, or anything. And as evidenced today, almost everybody passed the test. We had two people that didn't pass the test. That was the purpose of the memo, of course. Has there been anything else, Tucker? I'll leave it up to you. I mean.
Yes, Attorney Hollister, we have acknowledged and received your FOIA request. Our FOIA coordinator is currently working on that. You had imposed some deadlines that we are not required to. To adhere to, so she is working on that, as she's had several other requests that she is managing at the moment. So you will receive a response.
Thank you for that. I, I just want to be clear. If, for example, Mr. Chairman, you got an email on your private text, a text message on February fourth. We need to copy that. If, if it's not already on the tablet.
I will give you everything I have. I, I can't control what people send me. I can control what I send, of course, and so. But we'll be compliant, whatever, whatever you need.
Okay, just, I, I tried to lay out the instructions in a letter, and if you, you have that, thank you for your cooperation.
Yeah, not sure why that's so important, but we'll take care of it. Go ahead, Peter.
We didn't get an answer on your request for an extension, whether the applicant consents to an extension. Oh, you might have, I, I might.
No, I didn't. He was going to mention, he didn't.
What is the reason for the request?
Just to make sure we have enough time to get the things done. Around, we don't know what may be coming back now from planning and zoning, of course, that's a new wrinkle. And then, of course, we still have to get the information, and this board needs to review it around capacity, integrity, infrastructure, and those sorts of things.
So respectfully, I'm gonna hold our, hold the applicant's position on that. We have at least, we're going to planning and zoning apparently next week, and there's. At least one more meeting of this body in July. I have your request, but I, I don't think it's appropriate for me to just respond or accept it at this early stage. Let's see how things develop.
Okay.
Was, was there anything else? You had mentioned a number of things at the outset that you were missing. Are all of those subsumed under the FOIA request, or is there? Something about the ACOM engagement or something?
Well, there, there's a separate FOI request to regarding the ACOM retention.
Okay, so we're working on everything that's FOIA, right? So I just wonder, I just want to make sure that there isn't anything else.
We also asked about the New Canaan Health Department. Response, which we have not seen yet.
Do we think, is that in process?
In process.
I'll have to check on that for you tomorrow.
I don't know about that one.
Okay.
Okay. Let's do this. Take a motion to adjourn the WPCA meeting. You have a motion?
So moved.
So, second, Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
None? Let's just take a five-minute break, let the room clear. We've got to dial into the Board of Finance meeting, and we'll start all over again, call it at eight twenty. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.